All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf Committee. The whole meeting today is Monday, August 1st, 2022. It's 5 o'clock. Thank you all for joining us. We have two presentations and we'll start with Bob Sartor. Bob is going to talk to us about the Emerald Ash Program that he and the folks of the Trees Are Us Committee have been working on for quite some time and Bob's been kind of spearheading that. We really thank you, sir, and the committee that works with you. You have the floor to give us the update on these hundreds of trees that you've been working on.
Yes, thank you for your time. I was talking to Alderman Sesher at the slip code thing and he said, "How is that EAB thing going?" And I said, "Well, I better stop by, bring everybody up to date." It's been five years since we initiated this. I was a factory owner for 25 years and I had a number of rules for industrial engineering. And the second one was, a clever engineer solves a problem and a wise one avoids one. And the first one was Murphy was an optimist. We started this, I didn't think it was that clever, but apparently not too many people in the country are doing this. Because I managed to get a chance to lecture, give a presentation to the largest conference of municipal foresters in the United States, which is the Arbor Day Foundation yearly conference on this. Was one of five people to give a presentation and I had a lot of calls. There were a lot of people interested in it because they're all looking for ways to less expensively handle this problem other than cutting down trees. I sat down and figured out that we had about less than 400 trees. Luckily, we didn't overplant ash trees that were worth saving. And I also do the Trees USA Award every year and I have to figure out how much we spend in actually removing trees. It comes out to be around $1,600 a tree with another 250 to remove the stump. So you multiply that times 335, the $4,000 that we spend every year for all these 335 trees comes out to be about $12 a tree. So that's, it's quite a savings. We treat trees in 21 areas, 19 of them are parks. And half of the trees are located in five parks and a golf course. Most of them, the largest one, of course, is Palmer Hills at 70. There are 70 ash and Crow Creek Streets at 55 and it goes down the line and we've got one here at City Hall. We do it in two different ways. We treat them with soil injection, which is a yearly thing that I start at the golf course and we move on to other places. I do it alone at the golf course. I have a soil injecting machine, which has a tank on it and with 50 gallons of amitocloprid. And we inject each tree with about roughly two and a half gallons and it's good for a year. That's a preventative, it's not a curative. If the tree doesn't have it, that's fine. If the tree does have it or is larger than 18 inches, we have to move on to trunk injection, which is more expensive. So, but the golf course and has about 49 trees that we do this on. Overall, it's 170 trees we soil inject. The other 665 are trunk injected. And as I say, the overall cost is about $12 per tree per year. We haven't had, the first thing, the first law that I had as a factory owner was, of course, Murphy was an optimist. We have lost some trees, none from Emerald Ash Bore. But however, there were some things we did not figure would play into treating the trees. One of them was what, that our inventory was a bit flawed. The second of all is that when I began, I had to assume, because I couldn't treat all the trees the first year, that there was a beginning point for which it all emanated. It turned out we had two points that the infestation started. One by I-74 in Home Depot and the other one by Hy-Vee, because there's a lot of traffic there. And the Hy-Vee infestation had already hit Crow Creek pretty hard by the time I got there. And that was the second year. So we had a lot of trees that we had to say goodbye to at Crow Creek to be removed. But otherwise, total removals or trees that we didn't think were worth saving on the inventory were totaled up to around 50 trees. Now Jason and crew and professional people have gotten all but 15 of those. And those, some of those are the big ones at Crow Creek. These are trees that have 36 inch diameter, which will take a professional tree to take out. We've got 72 trees that were planted as a nursery over by the ban shell and never removed, thank goodness. But they would have had to come out anyway, even if there hadn't been an Emerald Ash Bore. Because they were planted so closely, they're only, I think the biggest diameter on one of these things is about 10 inches. And most of them are over 60 foot tall. So at this point in their life, 35 years, they're starting to just blow over. So he and crew got out when things got quieter late last fall, almost at snow time. Got 36 of those trees out and we replanted a nursery there of, not really a nursery. It's a group of oaks, which really belong there more than the ash ever did. And when he gets the rest of them out, I assume this fall, we will put in more probably oaks and a few other hickory type trees in that area. There are other trees by the sled, sledding hill in Frisbee Golf Course. And I don't know what's going to happen over there on that hill at this point. So that's where we're at at that. My last point was that about the wise person engineer avoids the problem. We're not at this point doing a very good job of avoiding the problem of over planting that got us the Elm, Elmageddon and that got us the Ashmageddon. Because right now we're planting maples like crazy. If you go down Middle Road and at the new sandwich place there at North, by Northwest Bank, you're going to find 13 out of 17 trees are maple. You go down the road a little bit at the new, I think it's Due Track Credit Union, you're going to find another 10 maples. It's at the point right now that the city of Des Moines hands out a list of trees that can be planted. And they say everything's on there but maples. Cedar Rapids the same and Iowa City the same. So I think at some point, we're going to have to get together with staff and kind of see how we can rewrite the landscape handbook to get around, get more diversity in what we're planning, both with the city and on private area.
Yeah, you and I talked about that a little bit, Bob, at maybe one of the things in the park. And I appreciate your insight there. How do we facilitate making that happen? Mark, we sit down at some point and try to get that list of trees and kind of figure that out. It makes some sense to me. And now that we've got kind of our own expert in the area, at least for the last five to 10 years, we should at least have a conversation and listen to your thoughts. I'd like that.
I think that's probably a topic at Development Review, Your Honor, where we would, because we're going to have to have conversations with developers about the kinds of trees that they plant. And obviously, they're probably looking at an inexpensive opportunity, whatever that is. So we're going to have to have some conversations about how that rotation can occur. But we'll put on our development review agenda for discussion and then we can talk with the home builders and developers about how we can make that happen.
Perfect. How many of those trees that are, those two areas are planted in right away?
Those are probably all private development, aren't they? The ones that do track.
Yeah, those, those two are private. We do have along, it's either parking lot one or parking lot two. Along the 18th Street there by K&amp;K, they have a line of maples going up there. There are also red maples, which are sold intolerant, which may be coming down the line here about 10 years. You're going to find that out. But landscapers like to put in maples because they last at least two years. They're, they're very easy to transplant. I have a maple that, that was planted in the shade at Edgewood and has, is at its third spot right now. It's in Veterans Park. And they're very easy to transplant and that's why they love them. And they look pretty in the fall.
Other questions for Bob? Yeah, Bill?
Is there a time, Bob, when the Emerald Ash Bore has decimated most of the trees and the rest of the trees are treated where they just kind of move on?
Yeah, here's the deal. Yeah, that's, that I forgot to include in my presentation. Thank you. That we are there. We are past the apex of the infestation. That was last year. That's when 50% of the trees died. And that happens in one year. Of those 72 ash trees in the nursery, 70 of them died last year. What happens is, is at 95% or greater of all the trees in Bettendorf and ash trees, and that's about basically around 5,000 trees have not been treated. And most of them are dead or wish they were at this time. Once they're gone, the ash borer has no place to locate and the population collapses and there's no pressure anymore. So after this next round, probably this next year, I will, I will seriously stop treating every year or every three years and just go out and look and say, you know, this tree still looks good. We'll put it off another year and see how that goes. And if there is a problem, we can catch it with the trunk injection and everything will be fine. But the, the total frenzy of getting them treated will slow down to next to nothing. And ash trees will probably are not the longest living trees in the world. They average less than 100 years or 80. A lot of these are over 50 because we haven't planted them in 20 years. So in the next 20, 20, 25 years, most of them will be out of the picture anyway. So we'll have been able to transition into just a totally different population of trees, more diverse.
Other questions? Thank you very much on behalf of the city and thank you to the Trees Arrest Committee and those who helped. You've saved a ton of money and you've saved a ton of trees. We really appreciate your work. Congratulations on state awards and other things that you've received. We've been able to bring to the council's attention at our meetings. We really do appreciate it. Ron and Phillips is here as well, so representing the rest of the committee, I suppose. So thanks, Ron, for being here. Appreciate you too and the committee's work. Thank you. Good job tonight.
Right on time. Thank you, Bob.
I didn't see the watch.
No, no, it's all good.
You were good.
All right. Thanks, Bob. Gentlemen, you guys did an awesome job. We appreciate you. Next, we'll hear from our committee development director, Mark Hunt. This is with regard to an update on the final plat of Devil's Bluff. That's the 1200 Devil's Glen Road development of which we are aware. And we know the developer is with us in the audience. Thank you for being here. So if the council has any questions after the presentation that you wish to direct to the developer, you certainly may do so for this presentation. Mr. Hunt, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
You have the floor.
So we thought we'd put a little update for the council on today's committee, the whole agenda, just to talk about what has been a pretty long process and pretty long drawn out project. And there's been a lot of moving parts. A lot of things have gone on. We've had a PUD, we've had a rezoning. And now we're getting into site development plan phase. I just wanted to give you all an update based on our last meeting at Planning and Zoning Commission. So we have a proposed project at 1200 Devil's Glen Road. It's a 10 acre site. Three apartment buildings, two townhomes, townhome buildings, I should say, 126 total units. We've worked with the developer to get, to get a few things. We want us an internal green space. That's located here and there'll be more close ups far in the presentation. But that's located at the kind of the northern corner of the property. We wanted a front yard aesthetic. You see that on the elevation at the bottom of the screen, along Devil's Glen Road where people are driving. We wanted to preserve all easements. There's many in place here that provide bike path access and some sewer easements as well. We also wanted a dedicated turn lane. Again, we'll get better graphics, but that's, that's the dark area here on the road. And we wanted a 35 foot setback at least with a berm or 50 foot without a berm. Due to some site topography, we think a partial berm is probably best and we'll talk about that in a little bit here. I think to understand this project, we probably have to go back roughly 50 years and look at the city's involvement at that time to today. 1972, a planned unit development was brought to the city. Three story townhomes, 24, at least at the beginning. Now, this never developed, so there was not, phase one was not even done. And who knows would they have done others. But that never developed. That left this property down in a little bit of a no man's land because that PUD per our code today, and I can't speak to the code in 1972, but per our code today, if a planned unit development isn't developed within two years, it becomes moot. I will say, over the life of this property, it's had a history of non-conforming uses. Some legal and some illegal probably. We had a steel construction company operating there for many years. We've had outdoor storage and what the layman would probably call a junkyard. And it's been on code reinforcements list, if you will, probably for better part of the last decade or longer. In 1999, those uses were still there, but the city was able to acquire the Duck Creek Bike Path. And one of the ways they did it was they went to this particular property owner and they got an easement in perpetuity for the bike path. And that easement is quite wide. It's roughly five acres on nearly half of the total property. So I'm going to give you a very unexact delineation of that easement. This is all easement in perpetuity. I think I'm about to clear my annotator. When that deal was struck to get that easement, it created what I call a density provision. There was actually a lot of, lot of things in that agreement. Placement of park benches, planting of trees, all kinds of things were agreed about in 1999, were agreed upon in 1999. The density provision said, "City will, will allow you access in perpetuity for this land for the bike path." And trade for that, you will always count the full property, including this easement in any density calculation for future use of this project. So that, that deal, that chicken now has kind of come home to roost, if you will. In 2020, a fire destroyed an existing home and office on the building. It was kind of at the northern, not corner, but northern stretch of that paved piece of the, of the property. After that fire, we as city staff were contemplating, is there a non-conforming use that has now ceased? And if it has ceased, can we do something to change the, the future use of this property going forward? Because we weren't happy with the, with the condition that it was in. That takes about a year. So once a use stops, a non-conforming use stops, by code, after 12 months, if it's not restarted, it's, it's considered ceased and can no longer restart. So we were looking at that process, being to our analysis, when all of a sudden, at the end of 2021, if you will, we're contacted by the property owner and developer about a potential redevelopment. So we kind of put that action on hold. March of 2022, the developer holds a neighborhood meeting in the Bettendorf Library and proposes 146 units for apartment building complex, different than the project we're talking about now. After that development, after that neighborhood meeting, we worked the developer. We started bringing down the density, making some changes to the project in concert with the developer and using code. May 2022, we brought to you a PUD revocation. That needed to be done anyway. We needed to get the PUD revoked officially by the city probably in 1974. So we got that out of the way. And then we rezoned the property to R4 conditionally, based on a, a site development plan that would have had three apartment buildings and two townhomes, the one I talked about at the top of the slide, or the top slide. We also have recently vacated some excess city property. That's the key shaped piece here. That used to be a pump station basically for, for city, for city use that was no longer there. No facility left. We never have to access it. That's gone. So we vacated that to the owner of the overall property. So it's kind of three parts, as you know, to any development project. You've got the zoning, you've got the site development plan, you've got the final plat. We now have zoning in place. We have a final plat that has planning and zoning endorsement, but hasn't been brought to you yet. And the reason it hasn't been brought to you yet is because they want to take a pause at the planning and zoning level and look at the site development plan and really go over it with a fine tooth comb. They asked, they being the Planning and Zoning Commission, asked for some areas of clarification in three particular areas. They wanted to know more about the berm. They wanted to know more about internal building separations and they wanted to know more about parking. And there were some code considerations here too. And while code is written and it seems like, you know, it should be the last word, it can never contemplate all in any circumstances. One of the things our code says, when you ask yourself, "What is a berm?" A berm is to the satisfaction of the Planning, Zoning Council and the City Council. So that is the answer in our book, our code book of what a berm is. So we want to take a little bit of time and look at that relative to this project a little closer. There's also some, some parts of code that need to be clarified or interpreted, if you will, about the building setbacks internally on, on any one lot. And I've interpreted those in my position as a zoning administrator as 30 foot between buildings of the same height, multifamily buildings of the same height shall be 30 feet apart, based on our zoning code. We're not talking about building code right now. That's a different, different thing. If you have tall buildings next to short buildings, especially if that shorter building is not a multifamily building, you want it to be at least as far away as the height of the tall building. Now, our code doesn't talk like that. Our code talks like a code book, doesn't talk like a person. So it's my job to interpret the code. And that's how that 30 foot, and that's, that's how we've been doing it, by the way. This is not a new interpretation. That was, that was similar interpretation by those before. So we've gone through all this. We, we had this meeting. We decided to postpone the site development plan and hold back bringing to your table the final plat. And we clarified those questions, those three areas, and that resulted in this site development plan. Everything in green is that. It is green space. Nearly half the site is encumbered by our, our access easement. So that will never develop. Access to the bike path will never change. The route of the bike path will not change. What does change are the buildings in gray and the pavement that you see. But I just wanted to be able to kind of show you all at once how much green space we've been able to, through the easement that was created in 1999 and through the, the work with the developer, the staff has done, we've been able to, to maintain. We've also done some things and clarified again on the berm. Because the site is sloped north to south, high at the north, low at the south. When you're standing at the top north part of the site, you're already above the buildings that will be built. So to berm them, you would have to build a 14 foot berm nearly to block your view of the building. Now, as you go down and the site levels out, a berm makes some sense. And so we would propose a three foot berm in those two oval spaces here. But we would say not in front of the turn lane for obvious reasons. I don't want you using a turn lane looking into a site that may have pedestrians in it because it's a home site and looking through a berm. So there's no berm here because you have a turn lane. As you're using that turn lane, you'll be looking through a berm. That's not a good idea. And then we bring the berm back again here to block that apartment building that's at the very southern end of the site. Now, we'll have to taper that berm for obvious reasons. As you come out of the apartment building and want to turn, make a right hand turn, we'll have to taper that berm off. Staff's original interpretation, and, and we stick to our guns on this one. We think being eight spots short originally or 4% or 96% compliant with parking code met the intent of the code, but Planning and Zoning Commission, they get votes and we don't. They asked us to go back and try and find a few more spots. They in fact found 11 more spots and really didn't take out any green space. So now we're over parked by four or five spots. Probably one or two spots. I correct myself there. And then we checked the building separations. They did need to separate them out just a little bit for the townhomes, a factor of two feet, I think. And then the larger buildings, they're now 31 feet or more separated where they were slightly less than that in the previous plan. Again, this, this hasn't gone to Planning and Zoning Commission yet. This is a result of their postponement of the project and asking for clarification on these, on these issues.
Mark, how come the townhomes only require to be 15 feet if their apartments are required to be 30?
Yeah. The way the code speaks, it separately calls out townhomes versus multifamily buildings. And I think it's note five under R4. It says 15 foot.
Once you attach more than four, it's more than a townhome, is it not?
Yeah, but that's the code says, the code doesn't say per number attached. It basically says any townhome 15 feet apart or more.
Been interpreted that way for years though. I mean, once you go more than four attached, it's technically a multifamily building, not a townhome.
Yeah. I mean, if, I would refer you to note five in the code and that, under R4. And that's how we, you know, came up with the 15 foot separation. The 30 foot separation is again on the multifamily buildings. So that, that's kind of it. That's where we're at. We're going to come back together August 3rd with the Planning and Zoning Commission and we'll, you know, we'll, we'll show them this site plan. I think this is going to answer most of the questions they've had. But I wanted you to see it now just because it's, it's a little bit out of order of how we normally would have brought it forward. Your Honor, that's all I have. If there's questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Any questions for Mark? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. So looking at the plan here at the berm, the lower part of the picture, it goes right up to the bike path. That bike path is retained, correct? That's still part of our easement?
Yes.
So the bike path will not be bermed over.
No, I just had to put something on the page so you could see the drawing. So these are, the drawings that you see are just my own overlays.
And then I have another question, and that is, looking at it, it's a storm sewer that goes all the way from the upper left part of the page down, going diagonally down behind the buildings, correct?
Yeah.
So are they going to construct a berm or a wall on top of the storm sewer there behind the buildings?
No.
Okay. I was just looking at the, what appears to be the elevation changes there though.
Yeah, there's no, there's no wall plan for that portion of the site or berm plan for that portion of the site.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yeah, Frank, welcome, by the way.
What type of a berm is going to be going in there? Is it going to be a grassy berm that gets mowed? Or is it going to be one of these like on 53rd Street that never gets touched again?
No, we would prefer that it be a grass berm, three foot high, roughly 12 foot wide. So that's a slope that's maintainable but also mowable.
Okay, thank you.
That was not me. I mean, when I first talked about this, I was worried about the safety of turning in and out of this place. I don't know that the berms are going to be any benefit to that. I get why Planning and Zoning probably wanted them. But I'm, I'm actually a little concerned with them, especially the one on that lower side because you're trying to turn left. And I get that you have some room there, but I, I think that berm may still end up being in a way seeing a long-term distance with the curve of the road. So that's, I thought they were left out originally for that reason. So I still wait for Planning and Zoning to bring it back to us, but that would be actually a concern for me. Because that was ultimately the concern originally was traffic in and out with that particular location. So that's, that's all I, I get what they're trying to do because technically the code says that there's certain circumstances where that berm may actually, we may be telling them to take it out a year when we can't see well.
If I may, Your Honor.
Absolutely.
Directed at you. You're here to help us. So staff's, staff's original recommendation is that, that we think the berm that should satisfy Planning, Zoning Commission and Council in this location is no berm. Because that's the way the code is written. It's a berm to your satisfaction. That could be zero inches tall or ten inches tall or ten feet tall, if you wanted. When we look at the topography and the sightline considerations, we recommended no berm. That's still staff's recommendation.
Understood.
Other questions? Bill?
Mark, does this project meet the requirements of the R four zoning district?
I'm sorry, I could not hear your last part of that.
Does this project meet the requirements of the R four zoning district?
It does.
Does it meet all the development standards?
It meets all the bulk standards in the R four district, if that's what you're referring to. Absolutely.
That's all I needed to know.
Other questions? All right. Thank you, Mark. Keep us up to date after Plan and Zone, and we'll get those notes as well, obviously. It might be easier if you just stay and we bring Brian up after we do two more with you, if you're prepared to just.
Yep, I can.
You have the floor.
Okay.
Does that sound good? Okay, so we're going to go down. Yeah, you better be ready to tell us why we're buying them. Consent R is about thirty-three forty Utica Ridge Road, a site plan. And if you, yep, you are ready. See, look at that. I was just going to talk for a minute, but let's hit R, and then you can hit S, and then we'll run over to Brian. Since you're already there.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you.
If it pleases the council here, I'll just run right through this. Thirty-three forty Utica Ridge Road. This is partly relative to what we were just talking about, a little more pedestrian. We have a office space, a C six Ops and Research Park, that would like to have a daycare co-located to serve anybody, but, you know, a lot of people that have jobs there and have children. It's an interior remodel project, for the most part, for daycare use. I will throw out there, there's lots of state regulations that happen to daycares that the city's not involved in. So, you know, we're just talking about what's within the city's purview here. The only footprint change, if you will, and it's really not a footprint change, is on the west side, there is a fenced area for a child playground. That's right about here. And that's going to take up a few parking spots to create, but they're overparked as is, so not really an issue. There's access to Golden Valley Drive and Utica Ridge Road. These are established routes. Nothing new, no new curb cuts or anything like that. And I think I mentioned the parking is sufficient. All utilities are current in place. The existing sidewalks shall remain. We're not going to have, change those. We're not building any new buildings. No impervious service. There actually may be a little bit less, depending on if they put any grass in the play area. So you may actually get a little bit of an absorption factor. Be pretty small anyway. So, you know, no real stormwater considerations. This site development plan had a positive staff recommendation. It was approved without dissent in June by the P and Z. And the Board of Adjustment did have to give a special use for a daycare to be located in this area, which made perfect sense. And it was, it was created, or was approved, I'm sorry.
Mark, how many people will attend this daycare?
That's a fair question, Your Honor. I can find that answer, but I don't know off the top of my head how large it is.
My worry is traffic congestion at the two times a day that ninety-nine point nine percent of these kids get picked up or dropped off, if we're going to have backups on Utica Ridge Road. That's pretty close to the intersection, fairly close to the intersection of Spruce Hills and Utica Ridge. That can cause some issues, that's all. And they maybe have a plan that everybody will enter off a valley and exit onto Utica Ridge, hoping that that's an easier way to do it, leaving, taking a right-hand turn for what I would assume is more than half, maybe seventy percent.
Yeah, so there was some discussion, and I'll try and recall the best I can at the Board of Adjustment meeting and the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings about that. But what we ultimately decide is there's so much space to play with here that they're going to be able to figure out some circulation pattern to navigate. And it may take them a couple of weeks, a couple of rounds to figure it out, but there is just so much interior paved space that they're probably going to be able to stack interiorly and get people in and out. Now, that's not a real technical answer, but we did think about that.
Okay. This looks like it's going to take up about half of the space there with one, two, three, four, five, six rooms. So if you're putting ten or fifteen kids in a room, I don't know. It could become a real problem on Utica Ridge. Other questions for Mark? Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. The, when I was looking at the packet, it had a picture of like a fenced-in area with playground equipment. Is that like right on the same level as the parking lot?
The, the, the play area is at the same grade as the parking lot. The fence will be.
The only thing between cars driving is a fence.
That's right. We don't have a, we don't have a code requirement that says they have to, you know, put boulders or stanchions in place. We've talked about it, we recommended it. And when they were at, they being the owners of the facility, they were quite positive they were going to put something in there, whether it be large lance even boulders or planters or posts to prevent a car intruding the area. But it's not part of our design requirement. I don't have a code I can point to personally for it. And that's one of the things, I think, having the state so involved with these daycares is really helpful because there's a whole state licensing that's happening at another level that I hope considers that.
They need to have something.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Other questions for Mark? Yes, Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. There are existing companies in this building at the present time, right?
There are.
Are they going to stay?
Yeah, I think so. I believe they're going to stay, and it may even, you know, consider it a benefit for their workers, is what I understand.
I have one concern, and that is, I think Shred It is one of the companies, and they have those large trucks. Is that going to be a safety issue with a playground and daycare there?
Yeah, it could be. Again, we can't really control the other businesses that are there. They're allowed to operate. I turn that over to the, to the providers of the daycare and the state that licensed the daycare to make that decision.
Okay. There's clearly a need for more daycare, right? So that's a positive. Other questions for Mark? Okay, this is listed as consent R for tomorrow night. I'd like to motion to approve. Can I have a motion? That it remains the same. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll take that up on consent unless somebody wants to move it off of consent tomorrow night. Let's look at consent item S. This is eighteen oh one Kimberly Road.
Thanks, Your Honor. Eighteen oh one Kimberly Road comes to us as a proposed laundromat. A little bit different operation in that this will be a, have as part of its, I think it'll be internally, you know, normal laundry service, but there'll also be a drop-off pickup for people that don't necessarily need dry cleaning but want laundry service. So you do see a depiction of the stacking at the top of the screen and the access for that. It's a two thousand one hundred seventy-six square foot building. It was formerly considered for a car wash. That never developed. Drive access maintains the same curb cut off Kimberly Road. You will know there is an existing, you will note there's an existing cross easement through there to provide access to the other lots in this subdivision. There's a very small tree count. I think five trees are required. Five tree factors are required. They're shown at the northeast and northwest of the screen.
They're not maples, are they? What's there now?
Nothing.
Nothing. This is, in your mind's eye, this is due west of Home Depot. If you were to walk out the side of Home Depot, you'd keep walking Russ Park, like you'd walk into this. The golf course, Duck Creek, or, yeah, Duck Creek Golf Course is right across the street. I often shank a ball into this parking lot, probably.
That's a part three. That's hard to do.
Mayor, you've seen me golf. Future land use and comprehensive plan considerations. Just want to point out, this says community commercial as an underlying future land use. That's congruent with a C two, excuse my typo there. It's congruent with a C two zoning designation. And, you know, this development, bringing business to town, kind of a new type of business, so interesting to me. It does support compliant coal, sea, attract, and retain business and industry. Utility water, utility stormwater, and just access. Just want to let you know that the sidewalks stay in place. They will not be changing those sidewalks. I think they're four footers. They're going to stay in place. Again, I mentioned that access easement that crosses the property and the curb cut, those don't change. All utilities are already there. No change to impervious surface, so the stormwater calculations are just the same. They're going to use the same stormwater management system. There's an elevation. This will be a brick facade on the building. You see the drive-through portico as well. Has a positive accreditation and was approved unanimously on the twentieth of July by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'd be happy to answer your questions you might have.
Bill?
Is the drive-through going to require zoning more of adjustment approval?
We have not required it recently. I think the last time we did that was twenty sixteen. So as long as they have their stacking of six, there's no variance necessary. They can just bring a drive-through in.
Other questions? All right, this is listed as consent item S. I'd like to entertain a motion to have it remain.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take that up on consent. Thank you, Mr. Hunt. I appreciate that. And thank you, Mr. Schmidt, for allowing me to allow Mr. Hunt to stay seated. It's now your turn. Brian Schmidt, our Director of Public Works, is here to talk to us about a purchase order for some garbage carts. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. On tomorrow night's consent agenda, item I, we have a resolution authorized me to issue a purchase order to Toder Inc. for the purchase of garbage carts. We will be ordering two hundred ninety-six gallon containers, one hundred and fifty sixty-four gallon containers, and fifty thirty-two gallon containers. This is to actually, for new residents and to replace ones that are broken out there in the field. If you recall, our solid waste management ordinance was updated this past April. The new ordinance addressed, after we went through a lot of meetings internally, the new ordinance addressed many concerns by the council and the public and allows for us to continue our solid waste service economically to our citizens. Since the adoption of this ordinance, staff and city members have received some questions as it relates to those who currently have a thirty-two gallon service. So as I noted when I was having these discussions prior to the ordinance, the reason why we were, you know, phasing out these, we found that these cans were problematic for our staff for the following reasons. We have seen numerous properties overfill these containers and compress the garbage into the can, in which limits our driver to fully empty them when they raise them up with the arms. Also, with the online shopping that we have seen, we have seen a significant amount of these thirty-two gallon cans being overstuffed and where they're actually just placing a sticker and on them and just stacking them up, which becomes problematic as well. Due to their size, these thirty-two gallon containers have a greater tendency to tip over and slide out of the collection arm when our guys go to pick them up in our solid waste trucks, especially when they're weighted down with a lot of heavy material. To try to combat this slippage, we've actually had our garage mechanics actually tighten the arms, the grip arms onto them to minimize the cans from slipping out of the garbage truck arm. But unfortunately, this led to us cracking the larger cans, the sixty-four and the ninety-six cans. Section eight dash three B dash fourteen of entitled garbage and recycling rates of this ordinance states the following. Effective April one of this, of this year, any new solid waste accounts will be serviced with either a sixty-four or a ninety-six gallon cart only. Effective April one of this year, we were phasing out the thirty-two gallon containers that were collected every other week. So we would still continue to have the thirty-two gallon service, but we would just go to a weekly collection. It's important to note that if you currently have a thirty-two gallon service with the city, you will be able to continue this service, pay the monthly fees accordingly. However, if you move within the city or your container is lost, stolen, or damaged by the property owner, you will be given a sixty-four gallon or a ninety-six gallon container, and you will pay those costs accordingly. It is important to note as well that if your container is damaged by the city during the op, during our normal operations of actually picking up the cart and emptying it, like I said, a lot of times when we set them down, sometimes we break a wheel or whatnot. We will replace that container or fix it free of charge. In summary, I just wanted to let you guys know, like I said, we've been fielding some of these questions out there. We are not getting rid of this thirty-two gallon containers. It's just only those who want a new service with the city. They can either pick the sixty-four or ninety-six. Over the next week or so, I will be working with Jeff Ryder and his excellent communications team to try to get more messaging out to our citizens regarding those changes to our solid waste ordinance that we approved back in April. Hopefully, this will shield off some of those calls. We will also look at potentially placing a letter, mailing into the quarterly sewer bills, maybe do some mayor's messaging, social media posts, and maybe update more messaging on our website. So I just wanted to kind of give you an update tonight of some of the questions that some of the aldermen have received in regards to our solid waste ordinance related to thirty-two gallon containers.
If we're phasing them out, why would we buy more thirty-two gallon containers?
We are buying more thirty-two gallon containers because those citizens who currently have a thirty-two gallon service, if we damage those carts, then we, you know, due to our negligence, they fall in the truck. Because one of the things, too, you have to remember, once that garbage can falls into the truck out of that arm, it automatically actuates the compressor to move that back into the back body of the vehicle, and it just crushes it. So it's due to our negligence. We've only had to replace three of them this year so far due to that. So we're just continually buying these, just a small number of thirty-twos to replace those from our, from my staff damaging them.
Could also put them in a sixty-four and not charge them the difference at the beginning or something, but I guess, whatever you want to do. It'd be a neighbor. Yeah, that's true. Any other questions for Brian? Yes, Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. I believe you said earlier, maybe it was in April, that you do have a supply of parts, like wheels and tops and stuff.
Yes, sir.
And are you still going to fix those as that supply lasts?
Yes, sir. We continue to fix the carts that are broken. We have a lot of wheels and lids and stuff like that at our facility.
Thank you.
Other questions for Brian? All right, that's consent I. I'd like to entertain a motion that it remains the same. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take it up tomorrow's consent I. Are there any remaining consent agenda items? Any particular council person would like to discuss or maybe ask some questions about it this time? This is a big list this time. We'll go Jerry, then Scott Webster. Jerry, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item N. Up there on Middle Road, we're going to put in, what is it, laundromat or something? My question is, is the entrance to it? Right now, Dunkin' Donuts has a right-in, right-out only entrance.
Nobody follows.
And nobody follows. Exactly. So we had the same problem, that same problem with Starbucks. So Public Works put boards out there on the, on the road, and we had the same problem with Quickstar, and they did the same thing. So my question is, is what is our policy or which way are we going? Are we, are we eliminating those right-in, right-outs, or do we want to retain them for safety reasons? Because people are, you know, stopping and turning left.
Mr. Hunt? The plat that's being brought forward, or the plat that exists, if you will, will require the removal of that right-in, right-out and a shared access to go in between the two businesses. So the, the triangle barrier, if you will, Brian helped with technical terms here, that'll be gone, and it will be a shared entry point for both businesses.
You're only setting a public hearing tomorrow night.
Right.
So my question is, is why do we have them then at Starbucks if we, if our policy seems to be that we're going to eliminate?
Well, that access easement was, was negotiated previous to, to this. So that, you know, that shared port of entry between the, the home that, if it, when, if and when it developed in Dunkin' Donuts, or Dunkin', as they're now called, that was, that was platted as an, as an access easement, if you will, prior to this, and solves that issue. I don't know, I don't know that I can relate it back to, to the other sites you're mentioning, that, that's, that's how this one will be managed.
Once we go through the site development process, we'll, my city engineer and I will give this back to the City Council.
Well, I think the reason for having the shared access is we've always wanted to minimize access points to our arterial streets. And anybody that ever travels that in the morning, when school's getting ready to go in, can understand that. You understand that, Mayor. Well, and just as a point of clarification, it was a residential property, and they didn't want to have a larger driveway to come onto their property at the time of the deal. And so the condition that we put on that was that it had to be a right-in, right-out for Dunkin'. But if, if it ever did change, we could allow that change to be made and have it a shared joint access. The access point then for the property was to go out the backside.
The access point then for the property was to go out the backside. There was a provision for Dunkin', if I recall, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, was that that property would access from the residential area through the Dunkin', through the Taco, out to Middle Drive as their only access, unless they had a shared access point. So now it's come to fruition, the ownership has changed. The, the new development wants to be commercial and wants to have a shared access, which we agree with versus having an individual curb cut to go back into the property, so.
Oh, and I agree with that concept, my only, my question was, why, why didn't we retain the right-in, right-out requirement?
Well, having, we think if you watch what's obviously happening, it's now gonna serve two properties. Trying to serve two properties with a right-in, right-out, doesn't make any sense at all. So having a shared access now that services both properties and having the ability to left turn from Middle Road makes perfect sense to share with both developments now.
Okay, so we don't think it's gonna be a problem on Middle Road then?
But there may be an issue with people waiting to left turn, but they, they do that now, trying to get into that. They're, they're not paying attention to it anyway, so they're left turning in. And now we have an additional development occurring and we won't have an additional curb cut if I'm right.
That's right, you'll just widen that curb cut. The point I was trying to make is you're gonna widen that curb cut, so it's gonna, it would be, won't be a right-out, right-in anymore, it'll be both way, both directions will be wider to serve the flow of traffic. People stopping to turn left are just gonna have to wait for traffic to clear. Or they could potentially go up and do, go around the horn, go a long way.
Worse than getting out from Whitey's.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Anything else on the consent agenda, anybody would like to talk about, yeah, Scott Webster?
And mine's not technically on here, but I don't remember where we put this. I think there was a letter attached to our council packet from some residents on Devils Glen, or was it not attached and Brian just sent it to us? The one with the sewer that has sewer running through the creek that has the rodent problem? Was that sent separately or was that sent?
That was sent separately, there's nothing on the agenda.
How do we accept that then? Because there was talk that we were gonna accept that as council as a letter to us.
We're gonna accept it into the record tomorrow night?
If they want to bring.
Yeah, we could receive and file it when it comes, but right now, if I'm correct, is this the one off Holiday Court?
No, this is, this is a different one that Scott brought to my attention.
Heather Stone in Crow Creek. We've had the letter, but we never received and filed it. And we're, there was discussion that we were gonna at least receive and file the letter.
Never really have a, we only have a policy to receive and file that's on, or like private roads. But then in this case, we have, I, I believe Scott, that there was four residents that actually wanted us to obviously reconstruct or re-stabilize the entire creeks, obviously through their properties.
It's from, it's right by Blazer.
What we were gonna do is just file and receive that, we can do that through a motion tomorrow night if you would like to just, and then kind of start the process where my engineering staff would then evaluate it and then come up with some recommendations and some cost estimates of what it would take to stabilize this particular area. There are a couple areas of sanitary sewer that are very shallow underneath that creek bed that, that we are concerned with. And we feel that we have some skin in the game in that particular instance because of our sanitary sewer, it is a truck line that, that actually comes down from the north down to the south that we probably need to protect. But yeah, we can, we can file and receive that through a motion potentially tomorrow.
Is there urgency that it couldn't be received and filed at the next meeting?
There is no urgency at this point.
I don't, I don't think so, I just want to make sure that we get it because.
Why don't we just put it on the next agenda to receive and file it? And you can begin your examination work.
Yeah, they've already started.
Fair enough. Anything else on consent? No, that's perfect, great.
I'll throw this out to the attorney, our, our city attorney. I'm on the Lord's slash Saint John Vianney Planning Board for this new church and school. That's M and O. Is that something that, since I'm involved in that pretty heavily, is that something that I should probably abstain from voting?
So I, I think we should talk about that, I guess I'll want to understand your involvement, you're on the, a committee making decisions for the, for the church?
Making recommendations.
Recommendations.
I think it's just easier.
Yeah, I think, I think probably if, if you were to pull it, yeah, it'll be, so, yeah, if we, why don't we just, yeah, why don't we just take that?
M and O onto the regular agenda.
And then you can abstain there, I think given that it's, you're not just a member of the church, you are actually, okay.
Pretty heavily involved in that.
So, yeah, so as the mayor said.
Motion.
A motion to.
Second.
All right, we have a motion of second, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we'll move those for you, Greg, and we appreciate you bringing that to our attention, sir. Yes, Jerry.
Thank you, your honor. Being we're on that subject, my, I have a question, and that is, do we anticipate a traffic circle on Hopewell and Middle Road at some point in time in the future? Do we need to retain right-of-way for a traffic circle at that intersection?
This is a Criswell.
Or a Criswell, yeah, Criswell and Hopewell.
I don't anticipate one at this time. We do potentially see one at the intersection of Middle and Hopewell. But it, once again, I think that we'll just evaluate that as, as we start seeing more and more of them occur. North of Hopewell, south of Forest, and through that whole corridor. We don't anticipate one at this point, but that's something that we can always plan for in the future. He would probably be a need for.
Well, so that, so, so my comment then is, we do not need to retain right-of-way then, so we're okay.
You're just gonna buy it later, maybe we talk to them and see what their plans are for that, so you have an easement if you need it.
Right, well, that'll come up when somebody wants to develop that particular corner, that's not.
Okay, this is in.
This is, this is to the east of this.
Thank you.
Of Hopewell and Middle Road.
Yeah, he's talking about, he's talking, he's talking about Criswell, but I don't know, I don't know you'd ever put a roundabout there because it's pretty hard to develop anything east of Criswell.
We only, we, we only own too late, we only own half of the street.
Yeah, that's right, yep.
The other half of the street is not even that near.
We'll do a half a roundabout.
Any other consent agenda items anybody would like to discuss this time?
Like a right-in, right-out.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve those items on consent other than M and O for tomorrow night's consideration. All those in favor? Any opposed? On the operational items for tomorrow, it's kind of a short agenda. Any items there, any particular council member would like to discuss or ask questions about at this time?
I gotta read that again.
All right, any items to be added by mayor or council, I have none. Okay, I'd like to enter, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. We stand adjourned, good work, people.